Good afternoon, everybody. I hope you can hear me. Welcome to this session at the Vital Sites for a Protected Planet Pavilion here at the World Conservation Congress in Marseille 2021. Thank you very much for joining us today. And welcome also to our virtual audience, which is now listening to us also and seeing us, hopefully. During this event, actually, we are going to launch the EU Circular Talk on biodiversity and circular economy. You will hear more about this in a minute. I am Alberto Arroyo Snell. I am head of policy and program at the IUCN Regional Office in Brussels. I will be helping with the run of the flow of this session today. In our office, actually, in IUCN, we are working on this issue for a while now. Biodiversity is at the core of what we do in IUCN. Circular economy is something that we are starting at the very moment. I would say more than starting, it's already some years. We have been working on plastics mainly, thanks to the support of the Principality of Monaco. But now we are focusing on the circular economy and its link with biodiversity, like all our partners here today are also doing. We are trying to relate these two very important environmental priorities. I'll have to mention our wonderful partners and co-hosts here today. Sukhina Gueye from the Ellen MacArthur Foundation, Tim Forsland from Citra. Both of them, unfortunately, are not here today, but we have a video and we will see them in a pre-recorded message. Covid doesn't make things easy in these times, as everybody knows very well. We also have Marline Weber from the INEC, the French Institute for Circular Economy. We also have Jocelyn Véliot from the Ellen MacArthur Foundation. And finally, I also want to welcome Emmanuel Mer. She is the head of the unit Sustainable Production Products and Consumption at the European Commission's Director General for the Environment. So actually, I'm going to give her the floor to give the first remarks about what we can expect from this issue. Emmanuel, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Alberto. I hope that this mic is working well. Thank you. It's really great to be with you in Marseille this afternoon and also online. I work at the European Commission in Brussels, and one of the role of the European Commission is to support stakeholders and particularly stakeholders in the circular economy. And this is why the Circular Economy Stakeholder Platform was created a few years ago. And it is animated and it is led by 24 big organizations, networks. And I'm glad today that Citra, the Ellen MacArthur Foundation, IUCN, and also the Institut National pour l'Économie Circulaire will be helping bridge the gap between circular economy and biodiversity. Of course, we need to consider science. And you will remember that the International Resource Panel a few years ago stressed that 90% of the biodiversity loss and the water stress is related to the extraction and processing of materials. So in order to address that challenge, the European Commission, back in March 2020, adopted a Circular Economy Action Plan in order to move from a linear economy, where we produce, consume, and throw away, to a more, I mean, to move from linear to circular, making sure that we produce sustainably, we consume sustainably, we manage our waste and transform our waste into new resources. The goal is to avoid always mining the earth and managing our waste as a resource. And in that context, it is extremely important to continue the discussion between the link between circular economy and biodiversity. In the Circular Economy Action Plan, we have highlighted the role of sustainable products, how to design products which can be repaired, which are durable, which can be reused, and when they are ending their end of life, they can be processed properly. We are also putting a lot of emphasis on the green consumption, how to better inform consumers about the impact of the products and organizations, also how to mobilize green public purchasers in that context. We have identified a number of key value chains where more circularity is needed. For example, construction and buildings, but also plastics, packaging, ICT electronics, textiles, food, water, and nutrients. We believe that by bringing a change in the system and in the way these value chains work, we will be able to tackle also biodiversity loss in conjunction, obviously, with restoration and conservation efforts. This being said, we need more discussions on the nexus between circular economy and biodiversity. And I'm really glad that the four large organizations who will speak today are doing this and what they aim to do is to bring a maximum number of stakeholders to get their views and help us better addressing these challenges. So thanks a lot, Alberto, and thanks to all of you who will contribute to the debate.
Thank you very much, Emmanuel. And this is the start of a conversation, as we have said several times. So what we are going to witness now is a conversation that is happening through a pre-recorded video between Citra and the Ellen MacArthur Foundation. And they will tell us about their activities related. So I will ask the video to start.
Thank you, Alberto and Emmanuel. And thank you also to IUCN, INEC, and the European Circular Economy Stakeholder Platform for making this event possible. It's really great to be part of this discussion today. And we're delighted to also be able to share some fresh findings with you on this topic. My name is Tim Forsland, and I work at the Finnish Innovation Fund, Citra, here in Helsinki. And I'm delighted to introduce you to Sukhina Gueye from the Ellen MacArthur Foundation. And Sukhina, you actually have some fresh, well, findings. So a study that you're launching today called "The Nature Imperative: How the Circular Economy Tackles Biodiversity Loss." Could you please describe what the study is about and the role the circular economy can play in tackling this crisis?
Thank you, Tim. We're really excited to launch the report today. The study, as you say, really is about highlighting how the circular economy can play a fundamental role in helping halt and reverse biodiversity loss. And in particular, how the circular economy can help redesign the economy to help achieve a nature-positive future. And this is critical because, as many of us know today, we are losing biodiversity at an alarming rate, right? We are in the middle of a sixth mass species extinction. And in the past, the cause of these types of mass extinctions were really related to natural events. But today, the cause is not so much related to meteor falling from space. It's really very much linked to our very own economy, an economy that's extremely extractive, wasteful, polluting. It's what we call a linear take-make-waste economy, where you extract materials from the ground to make products which are then wasted. And this is incredibly problematic because today, the economy is extracting more resources than our planet can replenish. We need 1.6 Earths to be able to provide us with all of the natural resources that we need. And this is the issue. We do not have 1.6 Earths. We have one planet, Earth. And this wasteful and extractive way in which we manage our resources is now responsible for more than 90% of global biodiversity loss. And this is a figure that comes from the International, from IRP. And we, as humans, are incredibly dependent on biodiversity for our well-being. And when we look at our economy, more than half of global GDP is dependent on well-functioning ecosystems. So where do we go from here? How do we tackle this crisis? How do we reverse this trend? And here, leading scientific organizations like the IPBS, they have stressed that if we're going to tackle this biodiversity crisis, we need transformative change. So transformative change in our economic, social, political, and technological systems. And it will require us to, of course, stimulate conservation and restoration efforts, which are critical. But what we also need to do, and this is really important, is to really transform our production and consumption systems that underpin our economy. And this is exactly where the circular economy can play a key role and can be part of the solution. And so this is what our study really dives into, showing how the circular economy can pave the way forward by redesigning how we produce and use goods and how we grow our food in such a way that we can also allow biodiversity to thrive. So we have here three key principles that can help show the link with biodiversity that I will now share with you. So the first principle of the circular economy is eliminate waste and pollution. So here, think of plastic packaging. Today, we dump one garbage truck of plastics into the ocean every minute. And if we do not take action, we will have more plastic than fish by 2050. But what if we could rethink the way we design our plastic packaging from the start in such a way that we do not create waste in the first place? So think of edible cutlery made out of seaweed or designing safely dissolvable sachets or designing products that do not need packaging. These types of innovations can help eliminate waste and pollution and therefore help reduce threats to biodiversity. The second principle of the circular economy is keep products and materials in use. So here, let's take a look at fashion. What if we could rethink the way we use our clothes, right? What if we could wear clothes, for example, our cotton t-shirts, twice as long through business models like reuse and rental? We would be able to have the amount of land that is needed to grow that cotton. So we would have more land available for the preservation of wilderness and therefore make more room for biodiversity. Now, the third principle of the circular economy is regenerate natural systems. And here, we can, for example, look at our food systems. We today have quite a, if we look at our monocultures, we have an extractive relationship with nature, where we extract nutrients, we release chemicals, we tend to strip local biodiversity. So here, with the third principle, it's about how can we employ farming practices that have regenerative outcomes, that create healthy soils, support local biodiversity, and really create healthy water and air quality and stimulate carbon sequestration. So here, we have a video to help illustrate the potential and the benefits of regenerative production.
Farmers in Africa are reborn into the economy, but also very exposed to climate change. Regenerative agriculture is farming practices that bring back destroyed soil in a way that makes soil healthy and productive, restores biodiversity, and improves nutrition. That's the future.
What we're standing in here are actually tunnels that used to grow flowers. And only two years ago, it was just bush, lots of weeds, very overgrown, and not much life. We decided to set up agroforestry because we wanted a food production system that produces superior quality, enhances soil, and sequesters as much carbon as possible, and enhances, of course, biodiversity. It was really when we first went to Brazil and discovered the advantages of syntropic agroforestry over any other agroforestry, we realized a lot of the crops that they were using in Brazil are also in Africa. And so we knew we could do it here and just slightly change it, ever so slightly, just to fit into the local context.
As chefs, it's our duty to source our food from producers who are really looking after the environment. And I can tell you from a chef's point of view, this is where it starts. This is where you start building flavor. And more and more, you're seeing customers push back and actually demand that their food comes from responsible sources.
The future has got food that feeds for everyone. We should not just think about ourselves. We are part of nature. We need to have a stable agricultural system in which you're able to store a lot of carbon in the soil to produce healthy food for human beings and other parts of the ecosystem. And therefore, get on a path of growth that is based on the wider ecosystem of circular economy.
So the video now and all the examples I shared earlier really show what the circular economy is all about, right? The circular economy is about transforming the economy to make it regenerative by design. And so the circular economy has the potential, really, here to help address and help tackle the 90% of global biodiversity loss that is associated with how we produce and use goods and grow our food. And so, Tim, I've just now explained some of the key messages of our report and where we really make the link between the circular economy and biodiversity. And from what I understand, you are working on a study where you're exploring this connection and really helping quantify the extent at which the circular economy can be part of the solution. And I'm really curious if you could share some of your findings with us and maybe share where you think the biggest opportunities are and why?
Yes, and thank you, Sukhina. I think this is really exciting that you're doing this study around these three really easy, easy-to-grasp principles. And I look forward to reading the full report. And as you mentioned, we are also doing a study together with Vivid Economics, the first of its kind in that it's examining and also quantifying the role the circular economy can play in tackling global biodiversity loss across four, the four sectors with the biggest impacts on biodiversity loss. So looking at food, forestry, the built environment, and textiles. And we're both trying to find the most effective interventions in each sector as well as the economic opportunities there. And building on this example that we just saw and have discussed here in the food system, I think it's actually here that we see the, in our initial findings in our study, two of the most powerful interventions as well in the food sector. And just by cutting food waste and rethinking our consumption of protein, these two actions alone can take us a long way towards reversing the negative trend that we're seeing. And this could also have some of the largest climate benefits on top of that.
Thanks, Tim. That's really interesting. And I like how you're looking into these four sectors. Could you maybe elaborate a bit more on food? Because I imagine that would play a key role, knowing that it's one of the key drivers of biodiversity loss.
Oh, for absolute sure. It's the sector that's contributing the most to biodiversity loss globally. But I think it's also really important when we're thinking about biodiversity that we talk about geography as well. And because, for example, in Finland, 75% of the land consists of forests. So here, forestry would be a relatively more important sector. So geography really plays a key role. And then I think it's also important to keep in mind that often these sectors can have these almost invisible walls around them. But it's important to look at this in a integrated way. And when we think of forestry today, for instance, we often think of the volumes that we can get from forests rather than thinking how we can optimize the use of the forest system, a system that can also provide really valuable ecosystem services. And one example from Finland that actually links back to the food system is that the conifers needed to produce one ton of pulp can also produce more than 200 kilos of berries and mushrooms. And today, we only use a very small part of that amount. And of that amount, a really small part is being turned into particularly valuable products. So that is a huge untapped potential, which is at the heart of the circular economy, this idea of getting more from what we already have.
Yeah, that's great. And this idea of this multiple value creation opportunity with the circular economy. But I'm curious, what are the next steps for the study? Could you maybe share some with us that?
Yeah, so we will continue to model the remaining three sectors. And we hope to have final results by the end of the year. And in a way, the timing here is quite fortuitous that in the sense that the finalization and adoption of the post-2020 global biodiversity framework at COP15, the UN Biodiversity Conference, has just been postponed. So we really hope that our findings can provide some insights into the goals agreed upon there so that they can be delivered more effectively by some of the interventions that we propose with the circular economy as an important factor. And in particular, we hope that to contribute by providing business solutions that tackle biodiversity loss, looking at pollution and waste. How can we design out pollution and waste? Reduce land use, highlighting climate linkages, and particularly looking at solutions in agriculture and forestry. But already before then, there is more happening. And already next week, in fact, this event is part of a series of circular economy and biodiversity events. And at the World Circular Economy Forum 2021, we will have two free and open sessions that look at these links. And on September 14, we look at the role the circular economy can play in reaching climate and biodiversity goals, linking to the two COPs, with speakers including Sir Partha Descopta and Elizabeth Morema, the Executive Secretary of the Convention of Biological Diversity. And then on September 15, we will look at biodiversity as a circular business opportunity, diving a little bit deeper into concrete tools that companies can use, such as the science-based targets for nature. And I look forward to seeing you there, Sukhina.
Yes, me too. Thank you. That's really interesting. And I hope everybody tunes in as well to listen into this topic about the circular economy and how it can tackle global biodiversity loss. So thank you, Tim. This was a pleasure to have this discussion with you. And now we're going to move back towards the conversation in Marseille. And so over to you, Alberto.
Thank you very much to Sukhina and to Tim for this fantastic conversation, start of the conversation. And the conversation continues, as we said, with the four key organizations at the very moment. So now I'm going to invite INEC, Marline Weber, to join us. And please tell us what you are doing. Marline, the floor is yours.
Okay. So yes, for start, thank you, Alberto. I'm Marline Weber. I'm from the National Institute for Circular Economy in France. I'm the head of Legal and European Affairs at the INEC. It's a think tank, a do tank. So it's a multi-stakeholder association composed of 200 members that are public and private, like NGOs, companies, local authorities, schools, universities. And we work to define and implement a transformation of our economic model to emerge from a society of waste and move towards the development of economy focused on the efficient use of resources. So just to say, the institute has become the French reference and the main partner of the public authorities. And we published more than 60 publications and studies. You can find on our website. And you can find our latest on circular economy, on biodiversity, and the links between them. And it's like you can find the QR code too. And there are some here. And we can talk about it at the end. We organize also workshops. We lead a Green Deal on Circular Procurement in collaboration with the Netherlands and the great Paris area. And we participate in the elaboration of the roadmap on the law on circular economy. And now we're working to improve it and to implement it. So we wanted by this study to question the links between circular economy and biodiversity, to know to what extent can the circular economy can participate in the mitigation of pressure on biodiversity and be integrated into its protection? What are the action levers? And is it relevant to deal with these two topics jointly in companies, in local authorities, in other economic and local actors? Because we know that the circular economy is aiming to decouple the creation of societal value from its impact on its environment. And this model implies to the implementation of new modes of design, more sober, more efficient production and consumption, like some new modes of design, like eco-design, industrial symbiosis, economy of functionality, et cetera, and to consider waste as a resource. So the environmental issue is therefore at the heart of the definition of circular economy. Yet, in the implementation of the circular economy, because I'm from the INEC, some are from the biodiversity side, but in the implementation of the circular economy, the environment often takes second place in the two economic objectives. For example, the word biodiversity does not appear in a national strategy in France, like the National Circular Economy Roadmap or the French Circular Economy Law. And this can be explained by the fact that the word environment is a vague term and it encompasses many different and yet interconnected notions, like climate change, biodiversity loss, natural resource extension, land artificialization. And so the protection of biodiversity and natural ecosystems is a missing link in the circular economy. So our study aims to address this issue, this issue, as the other studies here. And we wanted to be complementary here and not to do the same study four times. So and I know that Emmanuel talked about the industry side and the levers for industry to transform the economic model of industries. And I wanted to talk a little bit about local authorities and the role of territories to strengthen the links between biodiversity and circular economy. Because we talked about the fact that all ecosystems are unique. And it's important to keep in mind when implementing circular economy measures to think about this territorial scale in order to identify local biodiversity issues. This will not be the same whether we consider a wetland on the Mediterranean coast like here or a forest in the northern France or in Finland. And biodiversity is also diversified according to the territory. And some species are endemic and sometimes irreplaceable and very localized. So it's important to have a good knowledge of local material and energy flows, local stakeholders, the geographical and biological context. And local government has this knowledge, the good knowledge of resources, stakeholders, stakes, specific know-how. We, like Tim said, some are more agricultural or more forested or more urban. And finally, the local government have public procurement, as Emmanuel said, which allow economic actors to be guided towards practices that respect ecosystems and are more resource efficient. We said that public procurement represents 10% of the GDP in France and 15% in Europe. So it's a big, big leverage to strengthen these links between circular economy and biodiversity and that all the products and services that the states and local governments are buying integrate circular economy aspects. And the local government have land use planning tools available that can benefit both circular economy and biodiversity and create bridges between. and create bridges between these two thematics. I will just finish with some other levers that are the regulation frameworks that we talk about, research on innovations, awareness raising, education and training operation to make aware the people about circular economy. What is it? What are the solutions? And economic support, for example, taxation, public funding and payment for ecosystem services. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marlene. And yes, you can sit already here. I will ask the rest of the speakers to sit in a while, but you can sit already if you prefer. Otherwise, what I would like to invite now is go here, please. Let's make it simple. And finally, we are going to listen to the fourth organization that is working on the issue at the moment and is starting this conversation, ICN. And for that, I have here Barbara P. Oberch, Policy Officer at the European ICN Office in Brussels. Barbara, the floor is yours.
All right. Hi, everybody. So indeed, we are the fourth in this partnership, in the EER Circular Talk partnership. So thank you to everybody for already presenting the excellent work that you've been doing. I am Barbara P. Oberch. I'm working at the ICN's European Regional Office in Brussels. So at ICN, we are also preparing a report on this important topic to closely connect the two areas. Recent research has identified that there is a gap between circular economy and biodiversity research and policy, indicating a need to further explore this, which is exactly what we plan to do. And it'll be important to strengthen the link, especially in policy. There is a gap there, too. Our report will be coming out the last out of the four, so we would expect that to be ready early next year. And I can already tell you a little bit about what we have started and what we've got planned. So as ICN, of course, our starting point for our report is really biodiversity. And that is the lens through which we will then approach the circular economy. Secondly, our work sits with the policy team in Brussels. So naturally, our report will have a focus on policy and in particular, EU policy in Brussels. We will seek to propose policy recommendations as part of our work. Now, how do we get there? First, two activities. First activity, we will carry out a policy analysis. Here, we will focus on the European Green Deal, which the European Commission has presented to us. And under the European Green Deal are many different initiatives. And there is the Biodiversity Strategy to 2030 as the key policy document on biodiversity and the New Circular Economy Action Plan as the key policy document on the circular economy. Both of them have a host of commitments and goals at a high strategic level. The Biodiversity Strategy, for instance, has targets such as a 50% reduction in the number of red list, in the number of red list species threatened by invasive alien species or 25% of agricultural area to be under organic farming or 50% reduction in the use and risk of chemical pesticides and more. But then, the Circular Economy Action Plan looks at several key value chains that the Commission has already presented, this impressive list. And one of these is indeed food, water and nutrients. So now our report, our policy analysis, will focus further on this particular area. As we, we know that this is the area where there are these really important linkages between the two areas to be made. And so there are commitments that fall under this area. And these include ensuring the sustainable use of renewable bio-based materials, the reduction of food waste in Europe, the substitution of single-use products by reusable alternatives in food services, efficient water use and wastewater treatment, and also the sustainable management of nutrients. So even more areas to explore. And we will look into each of these in turn. So just to give an example, as it is important to balance commitments on for both areas, looking back at the bio-based materials, for instance, it is important that their production does not bring about inadvertently negative consequences for nature, for biodiversity, which if this is not done sustainably, for instance, a push for bioenergy crops could move food production to non-agricultural land and that could have impacts for biodiversity. So it's really important to balance the goals on both sides. Now, that's for the policy analysis. But the second activity is something that we are actually launching today because it will be as important for us to arrive at a list of policy recommendations by actually drawing from the knowledge from all of our partners in the Circular Talk and actually from you, who we hope will join our Circular Talk. This is really the beginning of a discussion. And we hope to grow this community and engage everybody in the discussion because something to stress in building better policy, it is really important to involve every experience, every voice and every perspective. So we hope to do that here. And I'll hand over to you. Thanks, Alberto.
Thank you very much, Barbara. And now we have heard the four voices of the four organizations that, as we said, are launching this discussion. But this is just the start. And actually, what we want is to listen to more voices. So what we'll have now is some minutes. Unfortunately, we don't have that much time. I have now the information that we have over 120 participants between people here and also online. So anybody who has a question, both online or here, is very welcome to raise it now. As anyway has been mentioned several times, this is just the start of a conversation that will take some months. So we will continue this conversation. But for now, thank you. If you have any question, this is the moment. If you don't have any way, I have some questions to my distinguished colleagues here. And maybe I can start myself. But I would rather listen to you because I have been speaking for a while now. If that's not the case, in that case, I'm going to start myself. And actually, I'm going to start with Jos, who is from the Ellen MacArthur Foundation. And we have been hearing a lot about the different sectors and the different possibilities to engage with them. Well, you have been working with a number of them. Which sector will you say that is more prominent or more promising? And which kind of examples we can find in those sectors that could help for the development of this relation? This is the COVID protocol. Sorry about this.
Thanks, Alberto. Yes, indeed, we've been working with the private sector, the interface between the private and the public sector for a while now. And we've identified some key opportunities when it comes to sectors. But as the Commission knows and as the institute knows, some sectors are also much more impactful. And we look at built environment, for instance, relating to the waste materials that it generates in terms of volumes, but also in terms of nature, the toxicity of those. We can look at textiles and, of course, the impact on land use that it has and the toxicity that we feed to the soil. Plastics is another obvious one. Mobility, of course, is in the picture as well. And what's interesting is that in all of these sectors, some of the strategies are really consistent. So the fact that we need to focus on retaining value and finding strategies that allow us to avoid supplying more virgin materials, so more extraction, for instance, through design, through repairability, durability, upgradability, but also business models that favor access over the sales of more and more volumes of products, for instance. We've seen when we've looked at the GHG emissions in mobility in a previous study that actually it is more impactful to give a car multiple users than to refine this production process. In other words, which is counterintuitive, is the business model that lies at the heart of delivering mobility is more impactful in terms of reducing CO2 than actually building better cars. And that's not necessarily obvious. So if you start to look at these things and monitor them, then you can create the tools to as well look at progress. What are the indicators? What are the targets? And when it comes to biodiversity, a lot of what business has to do in the first place is, of course, identify the opportunities. But in order to know those, they need to monitor and assess their biodiversity impacts and set targets against those. Fortunately, the science-based target network is helping on that front. But as it's been said consistently in that panel, making the link between biodiversity impact of today's extractive economy and what circular economy can bring is a task in itself. Making sure that circular economy is embedded in national recovery plans post-COVID, but also that it counts as something that companies will report on. It's not all about financial reporting. We see a growing call for non-financial reporting and biodiversity should be at the heart of this.
Thank you very much, Jos. And this also brings us to a level of implementation. At the very end, the local and regional authorities and the national authorities will be the ones that will have in their hands this happening or not happening correctly. So I would like to hear from Inec, who has this experience. What do you think? What will be the role of these national and regional authorities in the implementation?
Thank you. Yeah, I talked already a lot, a little bit about this. But yeah, public authorities has first an exemplary role to, yeah, to make an example of what can be do and create, as we said before, a virtuous circle to show that there is a demand of circular products and services that are respectful of biodiversity and ecosystems and create a demand of that products to let know the firmies, the firms, to create those solutions, those products, to create innovation and research about those products and to create that products on the market, a massive production, a massive, not an overproduction, but a production that are, yeah, more, more smart and to create that circle that maybe miss today because public authorities say, yeah, we don't have some products. We don't, we can buy those products. And firms say that, yeah, consumers and public states doesn't want those projects because they are maybe more expensive a little bit. Because when you buy those products, they are maybe expensive in the price. But you don't take into account the global cost of those products. You don't take into account the reparations, the maintenance, the gestion of the waste at the end. And if you take into account all those, all that global cost and the environmental externality, like the impact on the biodiversity, on ecosystems, on the air pollution, et cetera, it will be very cheaper to buy circular products and products that are more, yeah, of economy of functionality, to not have the product but to share the use of the product. To, yeah, it will be less expensive for that solution. But you don't, you have to have all these view and all the view of the global cost. So the public authorities have this duty to show the example.
Thank you very much. So yes, public authorities actually include also the European Commission. And the European Commission has now the Green Deal, which a number of initiatives have already been mentioned a number of times. Well, how they could make, how we can, how the Green Deal itself can help to establish this relation between the circular economy and the biodiversity? This is a question for you, Emmanuel.
Thank you. Yes, I think we have a great opportunity now with the Green Deal because we have been working across all sectors within the European Commission with the 27 member states of the European Union and the European Parliament to reach our goal of climate neutrality by 2050, but also to work on other extremely important aspects. So as it was mentioned, the Circular Economy Action Plan is one of them with very concrete actions. The biodiversity strategy is another one. And there are some linkages, as we said, notably on sustainable products and consumption and the importance of circular business models. But when you look also at the Farm-to-Fork strategy, you will see there again that we are talking about sustainable agri-food industries. So for all the strategies, we have tried to make these connections while keeping separate agendas, also for the sake of then running a number of actions. Why? Because our role also at the European Commission, now that the Circular Economy Action Plan is shared by the European Parliament and by the 27 ministers, is to propose legislation. And then we, on the basis of strategy, we can proceed. So we can proceed with initiatives on how we ship our wastes in Europe and beyond Europe. This has tremendous biodiversity impacts when we ship our wastes without any, you know, good knowledge of what is being done in certain countries. So instead of shipping our waste, we export all the health and environmental challenges. It's also important when we deal with how to revise the so-called Eco-Design Directive that prohibits from the placing on the EU market certain goods which are not sufficiently energy efficient today. But tomorrow, it could be also they are not meeting the minimum goals on the environmental side. It can be on green claims, how to make sure that when companies are making green claims on their products, these are solid, reliable, that consumers can trust them. So I think there are many actions that can help for the transformation of the circular economy, but also for better protecting our biodiversity, again, beyond conservation and restoration efforts, which are absolutely needed. I think that what is critical as well is to take, to seize the opportunities from the recovery plans. So there is a strategic agenda, there is a legislative agenda, but there is also a financial part to it. And the idea is that all the money that the European Commission is borrowing on the markets today will be used to succeed in this green and digital transformation. And member states are submitting recovery plans. Circular economy is part of this. They need to allocate at least 30% of their plans to the environment, to climate action as well. So I think we have really a great opportunity pulling in the same direction to provoke this necessary change. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Emmanuel. And of course, there is another level to this discussion, which is the international discussion. There is also a moment now that is very important. This has been mentioned before by Tim, I think, during the video, the CBD. Now we are preparing the global biodiversity framework for the next 10 years. How do we plan to make that happen? And how this will connect with the circular economy? Well, this is a question actually to our colleague Barbara from the European Office of ICN.
Thank you. Yes, indeed, the global level. And I wanted to reflect very quickly on what Emmanuel was saying. Just what a great example the European Green Deal is to actually put all of these initiatives under one package. And that is something that we should all be looking to. And also the externalities, that managing these externalities from between countries and between regions, this is also why a global effort is needed. So we really need to look at this from a global perspective. So here we are, the World Conservation Congress, for a few more days. And important steps are already being taken here. We're on the road, so to speak, regarding the biodiversity, the global biodiversity agenda, on the road from Marseille to Kunming. So coming up, the COP 15 next year in Kunming. When you look at the draft, the Post 2020 Global Biodiversity Framework draft, circular economy is not mentioned there by those words. So that's also indicative of our work, the importance of the work that we're doing to make sure that these things are really integrated well at a global and a high strategic and political level. There are, however, important targets that very much have to do with what we are talking about on pollution, on waste, on ensuring sustainable extractive and production systems. So that is in the draft and that will be discussed and ultimately agreed. So that's a really great path that we're on, actually. And I would, again, just like to remind about one more thing that's in the draft. And that is, there's a list of enabling conditions. There's many, many ambitious targets. There's also a list of enabling conditions. And one important enabling condition is if we want to achieve any of the targets, then we really need if we want to achieve any of the targets, then we really need a whole-of-society integrative participatory approach. So we really need all sectors, all stakeholders, all levels of government, and everybody on board to, to make things work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think that Jos, you would like also to intervene here.
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick reaction on the, on the disconnect on the global level. It's true that it is staggering that a lot of that stuff is there between the lines, but it's not actually written and called out. And that's really important, because in the process, what is going to be agreed actually is what's on paper. A couple of years ago, UNEA, the UN Environmental Assembly, a resolution on sustainable consumption and production was adopted that mentions the importance of circular economy, sorry. So it is in there, but because it talks about SDG12, and it's not about biodiversity, the link is not necessarily automatic. So our job is really to say, okay, we're going to tackle biodiversity loss through the transformation of the way we run the economy. It's about how we make and use the products and how we grow our food. And that's an innovative pathway to sustainable consumption and production. Therefore, circular economy, as mentioned in the resolution, has a role to play, and all of that stuff still needs to be done.
Thank you very much. And in the meanwhile, we have a question from our virtual audience. It's from Elina Sarinen, Editor-in-Chief for the Finnish Circular Economy, I will understand, because it's CE, but maybe it's another thing. But I would like to understand circular economy news, and the next word I'm unable to pronounce, UCOITiet, I hope is more or less correct. Would we need a binding target on reducing the national natural resource consumption for all EU member states? That is a challenging one, and I think that Emmanuel might be in a good position to answer.
Thank you. In the Circular Economy Action Plan, we've mentioned two big goals. The first one is to reduce the environmental footprint of the, of Europe. And the second one is to increase the use of recycled materials in the production at EU level. Because for now, we use only 12% of the recycled material in production, meaning that 88% of the time, we rely on virgin materials. So there are those two goals. We have a monitoring framework for the circular economy to assess how we progress on this, and you can consult it in Googling it. And what we have is many targets on waste, because this comes from the European legislation that monitors quite strictly the progress on waste. But we don't have indicators on the sustainable production and consumption parts. And beyond the sustainable consumption parts, the environmental footprint, which is associated to that, which is what matters. So work is being done to change these indicators, the discussions that are taking place. And in our view, we need to fix this first and foremost. It's only by having a solid basis that we could then look at targets. So indicators, monitoring the environmental footprint of our consumption are really key to make sure also that the progress towards circular economy is met.
Thank you very much. We are getting to the end slowly, so unless there is some last comment from our panelists or from our audience, I think we are going to start to head into the end of this conversation today, which is just the start of the broader conversation that is just starting right now for the circular talk. So I want to thank all the partners here, to start with with our panelists, and also participants here and participants online for being here with us today. Remind everybody that this is just the start, and we hope to see all of you in the LinkedIn group that is being created, and the link, I think we can put the next slide, I hope, and you can see the link to the LinkedIn group. In any case, it's easy to find, the Circular Economy and Biodiversity EU Circular Talk, so you will be able to find it there. You are also kindly invited to have a look at the two reports that have already been released now during this call, the Ellen MacArthur Foundation, and also this one from INEC. Both of them are available, and they are very interesting reads for this topic. Also, very soon, we will have the World Circular Economy Forum, as it was mentioned before, next week. This will be the continuation, the immediate continuation to this discussion today, so you are all very welcome also to join there. And finally, in early 2022, we will have the EU Circular Economy Stakeholder Conference. This is an annual event. This time will happen in February 2022, as I said, and the results from this circular talk will be presented there. This said, I want to again thank everybody for being here with us today. We are looking forward to continue this discussion with all of you, and please, continue enjoying the World Conservation Congress of IUCN. It's still ongoing. Hope to see you all very soon. Have a nice day. Bye-bye.